School system for everyone and helping improve our overall outcomes for our students. And Eddie is just one of those amazing leaders that I've had the honor to know throughout the past school year. And then our little students that are coming in, I've been telling them that they get to be the leader on day one of school because they know the school. They know where things are so that they can help lead their peers when they start first day and help them get over that first day's dinner. So, thank you, Eddie. You're doing a great job.
Thanks for that opportunity. Thanks, Board. All right, everybody.
You too. Listen, now we're going to move on to our public comments. Shayna, how many comments do we have signed up?
We have five comments signed up.
All right, great. So what we'll do for a public comment is you will have five, three minutes for your comments. Please state how you are affiliated with the City Schools of Decatur. And also if there are any particular, very personal issues that you need to discuss, it would be better for you to come to one of us individually or maybe to the superintendent so we can address the issues together in a more private setting. So a public setting is just for you to tell me, not to be a particular or general, be more general and not very specific to a particular teacher or staff member. Okay? So we'll start with the first name.
Ms. Wendellyn Shaw, in person. Okay, we'll move on to Ms. Susan Camp, in person. Okay, we'll move on to Ms. Vivi Segal.
Hi, my name is Vivi Segal. I have two kids in district schools and I work in public health at the federal level. Part of my job recently has been to guide communities on preventing the spread of COVID-19. I've also been happy to help City Schools of Decatur on the mitigations committee. The district has been thoughtful about dealing with this difficult situation, but I am concerned about the modified quarantine plan, which increases the risk for outbreaks in our schools. I know quarantine was very difficult for a lot of families last year. Sometimes whole classrooms had to stay home for two weeks, and I appreciate the district looking to reduce this burden. But this year, per CDC guidance, it's already reduced. Only students within three feet of a student with COVID need quarantine if everyone has been wearing masks. Also, school districts can use a seven-day quarantine with a negative test instead of a 14-day quarantine. Quarantine remains a primary outbreak prevention tool in CDC's school guidance updated just last week. Quarantining exposed students stops the chain of transmission in a classroom. What this modified quarantine plan does is remove this tool. Instead of separating exposed students until we know that they're not infected, it keeps them in the classroom where the chain of transmission can continue. Instead of having two or three students who are within three feet and need to quarantine, we'll now have an entire class exposed. Masks will help, but masks are meant to be used in combination with other tools, including quarantine. The rate of secondary transmission in classrooms was low last year, but last year we were dealing with a very different COVID-19. The Delta variant is much more transmissible than the original virus, and transmission may happen in five to 10 seconds. For example, the time it takes for a first grader to notice their mask is below their nose until it gets out. In the UK, outbreaks in schools are surging. In Missouri last month, a Delta outbreak shut down two summer school programs, and we're seeing a string of summer camp outbreaks as Delta spreads across the country. Any evidence about low transmission in schools that was used to justify this plan is now outdated. There is no transmission data about Delta that supports removing quarantine. I suggest the following ideas to keep kids in school as much as possible and also protect additional students from being exposed. Number one, use modified quarantine only in age groups that can be vaccinated. Delta's spreading quickly in unvaccinated populations like our kids under 12, and they'll be able to get vaccinated in just a few months. Number two, require mandatory testing for students to do modified quarantine. Without it, there's no way to know if it is even still spreading asymptomatic in the classroom. Number three, consider, instead of keeping kids, exposed kids, in the classroom, creating a supervised space on campus where students could quarantine away from their unexposed classmates. And number four, let parents of under 12 children choose whether or not their child will be in a classroom where modified quarantine is happening. Getting kids back to school is important, but so is taking them to daycare.
Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Davis Segal.
Hello. I have two children in Westchester. I'm a pediatric oncologist and I work with Dr. Furman on the mitigations plan, which I want to talk about here. Starting with a compliment for Dr. Furman, in developing a plan she considered all the points with transparency and accepted suggestions to improve the plan. She also said that if we disagreed with her plan, we should take any concerns to the school board. I respectfully disagree with CSD's quarantine plan because it removes an important layer of protection from CDC's recommended plan for opening schools. CDC clearly recommends quarantine for exposed students, which could be ended as soon as seven days with the use of testing. In my opinion, the data is not convincing that the Decatur's plan is a safe option. Compared to data from past Decatur school year, children will be at school for longer days with less distance between them, getting lunch together unmasked, and will have different quarantine procedures, all which could lead for a higher risk than past data might indicate. Notably, the Delta variant of SARS-CoV-2 will likely be the predominant strain in Georgia in the next few weeks and is at least 60% more infectious than the previous variant, has produced outbreaks in unvaccinated populations, and has caused a near vertical increase in COVID incidence in several other countries. The current plan has not been adjusted to account for Delta being the predominant strain. On the history that one other school district tried similar plans, that was in Missouri, there's only one, there's one published report. And if this report had much different conditions than we'll be experiencing in August, such as the other school district had open windows to maximize ventilation and it was pre-Delta. My last concern is that this plan adds extra risk and less choice to vulnerable populations. Students less than 12 have no ability to vaccinate. Many families of children less than 12 and even in compromised individuals were looking forward to rejoining school in person this fall, and this option two plan adds risk to them. And I think it might cause people to choose not to attend school in person, which is the opposite of the intention of the plan. I understand the need to maximize influence with instruction, but we are learning that people are developing long COVID symptoms, which can affect concentration and learning. So be more cautious now to be effective in preventing chronic disease for these kids later on. I have two asks. Number one, delay option two for classrooms with students less than 12 years until this age group has the opportunity to be vaccinated. Number two, if option two is enacted, monitor closely, have a low threshold for discontinuing this plan because we want to know if this plan is working or not before an outbreak develops in one of our classrooms. Thank you.
The next is Mr. Alberto Stolfi.
Mr. Stolfi? Hi, yeah, can you hear me? Yes, hi, my name is Bianca, my name is Bianca Perry, I'm the wife. Good evening, I'd like to share personal opinions from me and my spouse. As City of Decatur residents who are both scientists and parents of children under 12 years old, we want to express sincere appreciation and serious concern regarding CSD's new COVID-19 mitigation policies. First, we are very grateful for the mask mandate. Masks are the most effective and easiest measure to implement in schools until the vaccines become available for all children. One area of remaining concern is what happens during lunchtime when children must remove their masks to eat indoors. We hope that you provide plans for safe lunches at school, whether it be eating outside and/or allowing parents to pick up their children for lunch. Second, we are alarmed about the modified quarantine option whereby children with a known exposure to COVID remain in the classroom if asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic. Modified quarantine by definition is not quarantine. Given that this pandemic has been driven in large part by asymptomatic, including pre-symptomatic spreaders, we are perplexed about the decision to adopt this experimental option. This is even more perplexing given the possibility that children will be socializing indoors unmasked during lunchtime. Data suggests that we are entering a new phase of the pandemic, one in which the Delta strain could be thought of as a different virus altogether. It is more transmissible, including among children. Virus titers in infected individuals are higher than from previous strains, indicating more virus shed and shorter incubation periods. We strongly agree with the opinion of Dr. David Segal at the recent town hall when he suggested that we cannot rely on data from the previous school year when the virus circulating then is potentially very different from the virus circulating now. We are disappointed that the mitigation plans do not align more closely with his more up-to-date assessment. All kids under 12 are unvaccinated, but vaccines might become available in the fall. Does it not make sense to, excuse me, does it not make more sense to start off with a more cautious approach and then relax this if Delta is not surging or when children are finally vaccinated? The children, the current plan, starting loose and restricting later, does not make sense to us, especially when coronavirus infection may result in irreversible long COVID sequelling. By the time it becomes clear that the Delta variant is spreading through schools, it would be too late to protect our children. As working parents with no additional family support in Georgia who have kept our children in virtual school for the entire past school year, we are desperate to have our children attend in-person school, but not at the cost of sending them to an unsafe environment. We strongly hope that you reevaluate your COVID-19 mitigation policies and create the safest school environment for our children at the beginning of the school year. Thank you, and I also support the previous comments of the other speakers. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Shayna?
That is City Schools.
Okay, thank you so much. And moving on to our superintendent's comment.
Thank you, Esther. Good evening, everyone. Again, thank you for being here tonight. Esther, if you, yep, so topics that I'm going to share about tonight, first of all, our communication and just making sure that parents know where to get accurate information about our school system. Talk about our enrollment and what the budget implications are for that. Share about how we will be focusing on the core for the upcoming school year and then share some information about looking forward to innovative practices. And then give an overall mitigation update for our families and for anyone listening. So first, I want to talk about, I've gotten some emails in the past week about where parents can find accurate information and get questions answered. So I did want to share this and I'll do a summary as well in my Friday follow-up. So first of all, the weekly communications that I send out to our families has the accurate information. Parents are always sending that, we're sending that out weekly so parents can see that information. I'm trying to summarize any events from the week as well as previewing stuff that's coming up for our parents. So that is 100% a place to get any accurate information about what's going on in the district. And then just any weekly communications from our schools. So we are going to be syncing up when our schools send their weekly communications. We're aiming for Thursday this year so that parents from every school know that every Thursday you will get school communication, every Friday you'll get district-wide communication. Also, monthly, our board sends out a bulletin to share kind of summaries from what has happened at the school board meeting. Our CSD Facebook page is also a place to get accurate information and our CSD webpage. So if, and what I want to clarify for parents, if the page you're following for CSD is the CSD page that requires you to be added and you can't just follow, then that's not the official CSD page. So just so you're aware, the CSD official page, you can just like and get the updates through your feed as you follow that page. You're also welcome to email me, you can call me, and I have also set up open calendar invitations on my Google Calendar where anyone, oh, share the link in my follow-up again this week. If you want to sign up for a time to either meet in person, for a phone call, or attend a meeting with me via Zoom, I'm available and I've set up, I think, three 45-minute sessions each week so that I'm available for parents as they want to ask questions. So and I also want to share that my team, CANNIT, I reshared my communication expectations with them about our customer service so they are ready to respond to any communications as well. So we are very eager to make sure the correct information is out there. So if you ever have a question, feel free to email me directly. If I don't have the answer, I will respond and get that answer to you. So I am one of those people where I don't like to have emails sitting in my inbox, so I pretty come home after, after my day and I'll sit and just make sure I get through all those emails. Because sometimes you'll see emails from me at late at night, or sometimes I wake up and I'll respond to emails. But I like to start my day every day with a clean inbox, so you will get a response from me, even if it's, hey, I've got your email, I need to gather some more information, I will get back to you. So these are the main places to get information. Courtney Burnett, our chief of staff, is going to be reforming her communications subgroup. So she is going to be then getting input from our parents on, hey, what are some good ways to make sure we are doing good two-way communication, as well as sharing with parents what our communication plan looks like as a district. So she's got a form that she's getting ready to send out that just shares our overall plan and what that looks like and when parents can expect to get communications, on what day of the week, as well as what types of communications we send out. And then if you have questions, where you can submit those questions. So just wanted to share with our families, that's where you can get accurate and up-to-date information. We are going through kind of a website reboot. We've really looked at our website, we know that we've got to do some updates to that, so, and as we finalize COVID updates for this school year, we will be posting those on there as well. Thank you, Esther. Okay, so moving on to enrollment information. This is current enrollment information as of yesterday. So the boxes that are in red are still where we are under enrollment, the ones that are in green, even though it says negative, we're actually over projected enrollment there, and this is based, current enrollment based on projected. Great news is we've added 39 students in our K-5 schools since the last time I shared information in May about enrollment, but that number is 214 in the bottom on the right is the 214 students that we still are below projected enrollment. Next slide, Esther.
So we're 214 less students than we were last year, is that what that implies?
I'll talk to you in a little bit. So current enrollment for the middle school and high school is the red are the change differences in projected enrollment. So for right now, did I put the total there? We just lost one student from our secondary schools overall since the last time I shared enrollment. So our total under enrollment, under projected enrollment, that's not, not our difference from last year, this is the difference from what the company that projects our enrollment, it's the difference between what they projected versus where we are today with current enrollment. So the good news is the DOE, the Department of Education, says that they are holding schools harmless with FTE funding for another year. So what that basically means is whatever our enrollment was last year, they're keeping our funding for as-is up through the end of this year. However, they will use our October FTE counts to set our budget for the 22, 23 school year. So we will see a financial impact at the start of next school year, but as I talk with parents that withdrew their students, I have a strong feeling from the feedback that I'm getting that they are going to be sending their students back, not this year for one reason or another, but for the next year they do plan on bringing their students back. So I anticipate in the 22, 23 school year, we will see a rebound close to normal of our student enrollment. But what that means is that for the start of the 22, 23 school year, we won't get the funding for any students that didn't enroll up through this October, but if those students enroll, we do get a mid-year adjustment to help make that correction. So it may be a couple months of a little pinch, but I think we will rebound nicely from that. And as we plan our budgeting for next year, we will definitely be very cognizant of that. So I do want to talk about focusing on our core. So I shared this in my Friday follow-up, is that we have had a multi-phased approach to supporting our students and any learning loss that they've had from the COVID pandemic. And that multi-phased approach started with our June summer school. So we had a nice turnout for summer school. It was very focused on core academics and key essential skills that our students need to be successful in this school year and addressing any learning gap. So we looked at our students performing, any of those students that weren't meeting that expectation at the end of the year invited those students to summer school. The second phased approach is what we're doing right now, which is accelerating student learning through Launchpad for Learning, so getting those students set with that foundation so that they can be successful day one of school. And then this is the third phase of our approach to addressing learning loss is about how we are going to support our students next school year when they actually start school. So we hired additional intervention teachers, and we will be using those intervention teachers to provide high-intensity interventions for our students during the school day, before and after school, so that we can catch any learning loss in the moment. And that's what we are going to be focusing on next year. So I also want to share consistency of practice. So as we look forward to next year, we unpack our instructional framework, and the core of our instructional framework is the relationship between teachers, the standards, and the students. And that relationship is essential so that our teachers can see what the standards, what those expectations are, they can assess where the students are performing on those standards, and then provide instruction that matches what the students need to address any areas where some students may be accelerating in certain content areas, some students may need some additional support so that they can differentiate that instruction to meet the needs of the students. So that focus on the core is really where we are going to look at next year of kind of honing in on what are these essential needs, what do we need to make sure our students master so that we can move forward in a productive way with our students. Also using our core practices for equity to make sure that we have consistency of practice across the district. So the core practices for equity are using formative assessment and feedback, critical literacy and numeracy, and culturally responsive education so that every student can be engaged in learning in the classroom. We want to make sure our students see themselves in the curriculum and have a positive trusting relationship with their teacher. We are looking for these core practices for equity to be implemented in every classroom across the district every single day. So regardless of you're a band teacher, you're a math teacher, you are a Spanish teacher, we want teachers to be using these core practices for equity and making sure that there is consistent use of these practices because these practices deliver high-quality instruction for our students and high impact of learning. We're going to be monitoring this data on a monthly basis. So every month, our principals will be sharing with me monthly data regarding where our students are on reading and math performance, are they above grade level, on grade level, below grade level, and then tracking that over time. So I can watch groups of students, and if we have a core group of students that is not moving up to where we want them to be, that we can address that with the school, with the teacher, provide embedded professional learning to address and support those teachers so that our students can grow academically. We're also going to be monitoring attendance data monthly, discipline data, and another one that we are still building how we're going to measure this, but we want to start in eighth grade by monitoring how our students are performing, if they are on track for a four, to graduate in four years once they get to high school. We can't wait until they're juniors to start seeing, are they ready to graduate high school? We need to start in eighth grade because there are key measures related to achievement in math and reading and attendance that help us determine, will a student be able and ready to graduate in four years to perform beyond the classroom study? Whether that is in a work study, whether that is at a four-year college or a community college or a technical college, we want all of our students to graduate with their four-year cohorts. So we're going to be tracking that data monthly. I'm going to be providing the board with a packet every month on our school data results as well as some general updates for our school board and the public on how our schools are doing, just some even narrative data on clubs and things that are going on in our schools each day. So just wanted to update the board on, and our community on that focus on our core. So, said, looking forward to innovation. So our charter is up for renewal in June 2023. Now, that may sound like a far, far way, but I am a planner and I don't want to leave it to the last minute to start the process, to look forward to what we can do when our charter comes up for renewal. So it is due in June 2023, so I'm working on developing a timeline for what that's going to look like because I really believe that we need deep and broad stakeholder engagement as we get ready to renew our charter. In particular, we want to see what are other charter systems doing? I've been attending charter meetings, hearing from other schools on what they're doing and innovative practices, and there's a lot that other schools are doing that is really, really amazing, to build a school that's for students, not building a school that just has students. So that is what I want to think about, how do we build a school that is for the students that attend our schools? And then developing a visioning process, so what do our students want to see in their schools? What do our teachers want to see in our schools? What do our parents and community members want to see out of our schools? So going through a visioning process as well to help build what that looks like. When we have a charter, the sky is the limit on the flexibility that we can have going forward. We don't have a lot of flexibility in our current charter, and I think that's something that is really needed in our school district to help meet the needs of all the learners in our school system where they are and get them to a place of really achieving high, high standards. So I'll be sharing a timeline and a calendar and then how people can sign up for planning teams, as well as developing partnerships with this Charter System Foundation, which really guides that work, and have a call scheduled with them in a couple weeks to kind of say, okay, here's our timeline. They've got a lot of resources for us to use and connections for me as we go forward in this process so we can do this and do it very well. Okay, so let's get into mitigation. So we did receive last week updated guidelines from the CDC, and I pulled out a couple quotes here that really helped solidify where we're going with our mitigation strategies. So first of all, the CDC said that if school administrators decide to move any of the prevention strategies for their school based on local conditions, they should remove them one at a time and monitor closely. They also continued to state that schools should communicate their strategies and any changes in the plans to parents, staff, and families and direct holder students using accessible materials and communication channels in a language, a literacy level that teachers, staff, and students and families understand. So really listening to this guidance and talking about looking at our mitigation plans about where are we with these mitigation plans, what are we implementing as it aligns to this guidance from the CDC, and understanding that the CDC is prioritizing in-person learning, even if it means we can't do 100% of the strategies that they've outlined 100% of the time in a 100 perfect way. So through consultation with the team, and David's here, and he helped participate and brought a really good perspective for us to listen to and hear and process. But also, these people are familiar with our school system and what works for CSD. So we have built a multi-layered mitigation strategy plan that is in direct alignment with the idea from the CDC about if you're making changes, do one at a time. We are making one change or proposing one change for the next school year. We're also prioritizing in-person learning to minimize the disruption of learning for our students. So based on that, I'm going to share our overall plan, but also want to clarify that, yes, we are deviating. Our plan is to do a little bit of a different quarantine for students and offer a second option. I'm going to share a little more detail on what those are, but that is the one major change that we are looking at doing for next year. So we do want to also share that multi-layered mitigation strategy is that idea of the Swiss cheese, go to the next slide, Esther. And it's not about one makes it successful, one doesn't make it successful, it's all the layers and all the things that work together to prevent the transmission of COVID-19 in schools. And that's why transmission in schools is so low, because schools are able to really monitor for effectiveness and efficacy of the implementation of their strategies. So first and foremost is vaccination. Now that vaccination is available for 12 and over, that is a priority for us as a school district. How can we help all people get vaccinated? How can we remove barriers? I asked John DeMore, and she has been working with the Health Department on a mobile vaccine site for our students, that we are going to hopefully, we get confirming a date, and we've also got another healthcare professional in, that's a parent of students in our district that is reeling in, ready to bring COVID vaccines to our schools for staff and students that want to get vaccinated. So prioritizing that is key. Also, masking is another important strategy for our students, for our staff, and not just to not spread COVID, but all the other respiratory illnesses that are out there that are kind of making their way back. Physical distancing, you know, I don't like that our enrollment is below what we predicted it to be, but it allows us to create classrooms where there is a good deal of space between students. So yes, it's unfortunate that we're below enrollment, but it is creating class sizes of 18 where we can physically distance more than three feet per student. Hand washing and respiratory etiquette are, again, essential components of our mitigation strategy. Frequent hand washing before and after eating lunch, before taking your masks off, having hand sanitizer available are really important. Our cleaning has never been so great, and I cannot give Sergio and his team enough shout-outs. They have done a phenomenal job. I was touring schools this week, they look great, they are updated, they are ready to go. And just a sense of pride that has returned to our schools when you walk through the buildings. I was, ran into a custodian at Rent Row yesterday, and there was paper all over the ground, and I was like, can I walk on this? And someone said, yeah, come on in. And Miss Lavat goes, no, don't walk on the floor. And I was like, okay. But she was telling me why she put the paper down, to protect the work that she had done on the floors as they were doing some last-minute electrical work in the, or changing the lights in the building. So she takes great pride in her school and how it looks, and that builds pride in all of our students, which is so important. So thank you, Sergio, your team's doing awesome. Contact tracing, including isolation and quarantine, which I'll get into a little bit deeper here in a second, as well as enhanced ventilation, that's another thing that Sergio's team has done a great job of increasing the airflow in our building to a rate that is really high, and also providing our teachers with of our students, which is so important. So thank you, Sergio. Your team's doing awesome. Contact tracing, including isolation and quarantine, which I'll get into a little bit deeper here in a second, as well as enhanced ventilation. That's another thing that Sergio's team has done a great job of increasing the airflow in our building to a rate that is really high, and also providing our teachers with HEPA filters in each of their classrooms. So great job on ventilation and keeping those mitigation strategies. So again, it is this multi-layered mitigation plan. So the two things that come up on top of everyone's list when we talk about what's going on and the updated CDC guidance is masking, and then for this district, quarantine, since we are looking at a different option for quarantine. So first, I want to say that masking is really, really important. With COVID, masking is essential to stop the spread of COVID amongst vaccinated people, but also, as I mentioned, the other respiratory viruses that may be floating around out there. And our mitigation team brought up several times, as they are doctors in emergency rooms and in the doctor's offices, seeing an uptick in many other viruses. So we are strongly encouraging all staff and students to wear masks for the start of the school year. But mandatory masks will only be at elementary and middle school for staff and students. High school students that are unvaccinated must wear masks, and our early learning center staff and students above the age of three must wear masks. We no longer require masks outdoors, and that's in line with what is, what is recommended by the CDC. And that fully vaccinated staff may remove their mask as they deem appropriate to ensure students are getting the highest quality education. So our masking guidance is 100% in line with what the CDC is recommending. So let's talk about quarantine. So quarantine is when you separate someone who have, may have been exposed to COVID, and I'm going to use the word "may have been exposed," because we know in-school transmission is so low, and we are only using this quarantine option for in-school exposure. We know that it's low. We know we have lots of other mitigation strategies in place, and just looking at this one option to change and monitoring this data closely. So we'll call parents that have been identified as being in close contact, if they sat next to someone who was COVID-positive in their classroom. And again, that's everyone wearing masks, sitting closer than three feet together. They will have the option to either, one, send their child, have their child attend school at home during that quarantine period, or they can opt to send their student to school. The student will attend school in the same physical space as they were. And again, this is a variance from what the guidance of the CDC has recommended, but I do want to make sure that we are being very clear and transparent as we have going forward. So also, in line with this, is parents must agree for their child to undergo a point-of-care COVID test five to seven days after exposure. So if they're deemed in close contact, we are going to require, if the parent wants to send their child, they will have to agree to do a COVID test five to seven days after that exposure to help us monitor that data. We want to make sure we are doing this as safely as possible, so that is just another hoop we are going to jump through to make sure we're tracking that data. And we are going to evaluate this on a weekly basis. A daily basis is needed to make sure this is a safe option for our students. Also, any students or staff that are in either quarantine option, if they are, if they test positive for COVID, or if they start showing symptoms, they need to let our contact tracing team know so that we can provide that guidance for them going forward. I do want to clarify, because we're not doing universal masking at the high school, we are not going to do, allow option two to be, that second option as a quarantine option, because we're not doing universal masking at the high school. So that is our update for our masking and quarantine. I do want to give a shout-out and a thanks to the parents, staff, and community members who dedicated countless hours to help, not just with this COVID plan and getting things up and ready for this year, but last year. If I could list the credentials of all the members of the team that served and helped build all these plans and help support our school district, it would probably be a list a mile long. If I think about the hourly rate of these individuals and what they could charge for their services, it is astronomical. So I'm so thankful for their work and dedication and countless hours of service. And also want to share that we're retooling how we're doing our advisory teams going forward. I want to create two teams. One is going to be a parent COVID advisory team, and those are just parents, so we can hear that parent voice, just the honest, true parent voice, without hearing all the other scientific information alongside it. I do want to lift the parent voice as an individual stakeholder group, so that we understand the parents and what their perspectives are. And then also creating a healthcare slash medical or science advisory team, so the people that know the science, that are familiar with the science, and having them participate in a team. And I'm wanting to share, or wanting to create teams to make sure that I have good representation from multiple grade bands, good representation from various demographic groups, so that we can get that multiple perspective as we make decisions. So I'll give information out in my Friday follow-up about if individuals want to sign up for that, and that I hope we do, and I'll be forming those teams as we go forward. But did want to give a big shout-out to those teams, two of whom are here tonight. David and Carmen were so helpful in that work, so I want to thank them as well. And this is going to be a great year. I want to thank all parents for trusting CSD with educating their children. I don't take that lightly. It's very heavy on my shoulders, and I get up every morning excited to do the work, energized to do the work, and I'm passionate about making sure our students have the best educational experience that we can provide in our school buildings. Our theme this year is stronger together, because I truly believe that if we work together and we collaborate, we can create and do something great for the students of City Schools of Decatur. Thank you. Questions from the board? Any comments or questions?
Um, I have a couple of questions. You mentioned that you're going to have the two different advisory boards. The healthcare professionals, are those still parents?
Yes, yes, and/or community members.
Okay, okay. And I guess, you know, I'm excited about this school year, and I know the students are anxious to get back into the building, teachers are anxious to see their students again. I'm excited about Shonda bringing in the vaccination for our community members that are eligible. I am concerned about the quarantine option too, and I've shared that, because it doesn't even fall under the definition of quarantining, to separate if you're still going to be in the, in the building. And so I just hope that we, one of the things that was shared at the town hall was asking that we have metrics in place that we can monitor, so that we know how that's going. And so I just want to encourage, you know, to have that in place and share that with the community as soon as possible, you know, how we will measure, you know, how well that is going.
Thank you for the well-thought-out plan. And thank you to those who've served on the committee. I'm grateful to our wonderful community for being so generous with their time. I support this plan. I do appreciate the concern about the modified quarantine, so I think that the approach to closely monitor the data is a good one. And we know that as situations change, we too will make adjustments if necessary. I think we have to keep in mind that currently, in our environment, community spread is low, and our vaccination rate is very high. And so I think though we are making some changes, I think they're being made very thoughtfully, and we will monitor them carefully. And we now also have testing in the schools to be able to even more closely monitor our situation. So I know that, you know, this is going to be something that we will need to closely monitor and adjust if necessary, but I feel comfortable with the plan, and I appreciate all the thought and effort that has gone into it. I'm very supportive of doing everything we can to prioritize having our kids be in-person, full-time, as fully as possible, all activities, to give our kids a quote-unquote "normal" school year. I think it is so important. So whatever we need to do to make that happen, we need to do that. I think, you know, that's, and that, that is also supported by the CDC, saying that we need to prioritize in-person learning, and that is paramount for our students. I also want to express thanks to our, to DeKalb Pediatric Center, because they've been a tremendous community partner in coordinating directly with Renfro and Decatur High School, which I think is phenomenal, and we are so fortunate to have that. And they, Dr. Wilkoff and her fellow pediatricians and nurse practitioners and staff went to great lengths to get certified to be able to give the vaccinations, and then coordinated it very seamlessly and effectively. And even just during one of their vaccination clinics, they vaccinated over 1,000 of our middle school and high school students in a single day, and countless more before and after that. And that's just at one, you know, at one pediatrician's office. So that's just phenomenal, and we are so fortunate to have had the community support and the partnership from them. So thank you to Dr. Wilkoff and her team. And I also want to extend just a thought to our community to say, let's go into this together. Let's support each other. Let's help each other. Let's communicate. Let's be transparent, but let's continue to, I think, just prioritize our children and build community. We are still coming together after what was a really difficult year last year, but I am full of optimism, because I feel like we have a very strong community. We are fortunate that we have budget, that we have resources. We have been able to hire more teachers. We are going to have small class sizes. We have lots of special plans and programming for remediation. We have exceptional teachers. We really have all the tools that we need to have a strong school year this coming year. And so I just invite everyone to come together and support one another, and I'm looking forward to a great school year.
So as far as the quarantines and masking, I mean, to be honest, I'm somewhat hesitant of the issue. I thought that our number-one priority needed to be to get kids in school. If the kids are in school and they need to wear masks, a little more matter. If kids are in school, you know, so that's my priority, get them in school. I would, my default position in all cases would be if there's guidance from the CDC that's available, I would follow the guidance. And so I would get them in school in accordance with guidance. We're not doctors. These issues are so complex, that every time you pull one thread, the whole thing unravels. There's guidance, I would follow it. I also understand that sometimes the guidance is unclear, it's you interpret it, and there might be circumstances that aren't anticipated. And so you, with your team of advisors, are going to have to make some decisions, and I'll trust you keep doing that, and it's a good thing. One question in all this, I think it was Ms. Siegel, I might have the name wrong, I'm sorry, Dr. Siegel, I'm sure, but mentioned another option, which was a seven-day quarantine with test, with the negative test instead of a fourteen-day. We had this discussion in our work session, and it was my, it was my understanding from that discussion that that's not something we were offering.
It is, yeah.
It is. That's all I'll say about that. The only other comment I wanted to make was about some, well, I did want to second the thank you to Dr. Wilkoff, Wilkoff and DeKalb Pediatric. This is really heroic, I thought, of that group, and had a enormous effect in getting our middle school and high school kids vaccinated. And I think with a pretty strong assist from Regina Goble at the CDC, I think we owe our thanks to all involved. The shift in gears, on the charter renewal, I just wanted to mention, I'm glad that you are looking at a robust process, public involvement, stakeholder process, to look at what needs to happen in the charter. I hope that one of the items, I don't know that we need to reflexively continue to be a charter system without evaluating whether that's the right choice. There are a couple of options, and it's never been clear to me that we were getting that much out of being a charter system. The sales pitch was that we would get flexibility in various things, and it seems that the reality is mainly relief on class sizes. And I'm not sure if that's right. I've asked the question, and I've never gotten a clear answer.
Yeah, there's a lot more flexibility than we have in our current charter.
Well, but maybe this is the point, is that what I'd like to, what I think that we need to really think hard about what flexibility we want, what we can ask for, and how we can use this charter to our advantage. And, and I don't doubt that's the right direction, but if it's not, and we're not getting that much flexibility, is it worth, is it, is it the right choice? So just go in there with all cautionary tale.
Thank you. And my apologies if I forgot to mention earlier that we are short one board member today, so all four, four board members, we do have a forum, but we do not have board member Herndon in, in the building with us today. So I just really wanted to piggyback off of what my fellow board members have already mentioned. First, thank you for a very good report. I enjoy how intentional you are with what you share in our board meetings, as well as in your follow-up Fridays. And I'm hearing from many parents that also enjoy the communication, even if they don't necessarily like everything that's in the update, they appreciate that they're getting an update every Friday. So thank you for those. I will piggyback with Ms. Johnson-Davis in that if we can have some really strong mitigation going forward, very meticulous mitigation, so that if we start to see any type of uptick, we can jump on it right away. But I do appreciate all the hard work that you and your team have put in. I appreciate the hard work and the decisiveness of, of your team. So thank you for that. And another shout-out to the DeKalb Pediatric Center. So we are all here publicly thanking them for what a wonderful job that they did with the vaccinations. It was extremely well-run and efficient. We also are sending them a letter signed by the board as well, just to let them know how much we appreciate them, Dr. Wilkoff, and, and the team. And I'm just too looking forward to an amazing school year, where our kids will be able to be in their schools for, in their classrooms some for the first time. I know that there, I have a few teacher friends who have not seen their kids' faces, because they've been either wearing masks, or they've been virtual, and they turn their camera off and don't have their camera on. And so they haven't really been able to connect with them like, like teachers like to do. This is one reason why they do the job that they do. So I'm actually really excited for the staff to be fully engaged with their, with their kids and, and get back into what they've really started this career for. So our next board meeting will be after school starts, so I am looking forward to hearing how every, every once first week is, how the staff is doing, how morale is doing, how students are doing, and how we're getting back acclimated to somewhat of a sense of normalcy. So definitely looking forward to that next board meeting for that. So that was really all I had. So we can move on to our consent items. And we have the personal report, our school nutrition report, our financial report, and then our FY 2022 budget amendment, and that was for the COLA, remind me? Oh, for the COLA, correct. So do I have a motion to approve consent items?
You could approve consent items?
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, board chair, both aye. So that's all we have for our consent items. And items for action, information, or discussion, we are going to go over our 2021, 2022 calendar for some of the changes that we'll be making there.
So last year, we sent, we did a pretty wide stakeholder input survey with parents, with our teachers. They did a lot of feedback as well. And the two, well, the one big area we were looking at for making a change, let me pull up the wording here, is early release days. So the proposal is to add two sets of early release days. One is September 16th and September 17th, and the other is Friday, February 10th and February 11th. And those are the Thursdays and Fridays immediately preceding our fall break and our winter break. I do, I am aware that there is a Jewish holiday that starts on the sunset of the 16th, maybe the 15th, I can't remember, but there is a Jewish holiday that is, kind of interferes with one of those, but spoke with some of our colleagues, and they felt that it was still appropriate to use that date, even though it backed up, because we can accommodate any of those families that would need to celebrate that Jewish holiday earlier in the week with conferences. And if a teacher needs to leave early, we can cover their classes for them, or grant them an opportunity to leave early when they need to be at home to celebrate that event. So that is, we're also going to provide enhanced childcare. So if leaving school early is going to impede teachers or parents' ability to get their children, we will have childcare available. We're going to come, work with the city on that. And that, these are dedicated early release to hold parent-teacher conferences so that those parents can, the teachers can have some dedicated time for that, as well as the parents who need to attend conferences after hours will have that opportunity because we know that not all, right now, currently, all conferences are held pretty much during teacher planning time, and that is an obstacle for some of our parents to get there during the school day. So we definitely want to provide that opportunity for parents to attend after hours so they can get there for the conferences. So that is one. And the other option is Juneteenth observation. We would like to propose that the board approve the closing schools and offices. And it's really just schools because our office, the office, because the schools are closed, is June 20th, and observance of Juneteenth. And we did look at when we are going to add that date back, and we, it was decided that it is going to be that the Friday before we close for the summer break, because that kind of makes it a full, closes out that full week, so.
Any discussion on that, board members?
No. Motion to approve the changes to the 2021, 2022 calendar?
To approve the changes to the 2021, 2020 calendar?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Board chair, both aye. So that is all the items we have for action or discussion. So we'll look at some future dates here. So we still have two more days for Launchpad of Learning for Cohort A, and then July 19th to the 22nd will be the second week. So those are the two main days, main weeks for Launchpad. Opening day for our staff, teachers, is August 2nd. So that is one of the days in the school year that I look forward to the most. I'm very excited about that. First day of school is August 3rd. And then we also have all of our board meetings for the year listed out. So essentially, the second Tuesday of every month is our board meeting unless there's a holiday. And then we also have a work session on the fourth Tuesday of every month unless there's a holiday. Any other dates that we need to go over or mention? Wow, is that it? Are we done? Yeah, I run a tight ship. I like it. All right, so our July 13th school board meeting is adjourned at 7:30, 7 PM. Thank you again, everybody that joined us in person. Thank you, everyone that has joined us virtually. Have a great night.